Good evening. I have seven o'clock. I'm going to call the meeting to order for the Land Bank. Ask the clerk to please call the roll for the Land Bank meeting.
Thank you. Chairman Jim Benage.
Here.
Mr. Greg David.
Present.
Mr. Tyler Dean.
Here.
Ms. Emily Hamburg.
Here.
Mr. Tom Schmitz. Here's he's absent. Mr. John Welch. And you have a quorum, Chairman.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the minutes from the January twenty first, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, if I get the right year yet, Land Bank meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mr. David.
A motion to approve the January twenty first, twenty twenty five bill or Land Bank minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. David and second by Mr. Dean. Any questions or discussions? You now call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. So that's five ayes. Any opposed? That motion carries five to zero.
Five because.
We are a land bank, so I had to vote. Actually, I can abstain because I wasn't there, but. But anyway, so opportunity for public comments. Any public comments concerning the Land Bank, not the city council? And if there are none, we'll move on to, do we need an executive session for Land Bank? Okay, we'll pass on the executive session and move on to resolutions and final actions. This item is to consider as second amendment to the planned unit development agreement concerning the development of the Tier Verde South addition to the city of Bel Air. This was considered at the last city council meeting, so now it's up to the Land Bank to approve this. Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hamburg.
I'm going to make a motion to accept the second amendment to the planned unit development agreement concerning the development of the Tier Verde South addition to the city of Bel Air, Kansas, and authorize the chairman to sign.
Well, second.
Motion by Ms. Well, Ms. Hamburg, a second by Mr. Welch. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any negatives? That motion carries five to zero. There are no other items. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the Land Bank meeting.
My motion to adjourn.
Mr. Welch, a second by Mr. Dean. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same side, that motion carries five to zero. Land Bank meeting is concluded. And now we're ready to, I will call to order the meeting, the regular city council meeting. And ask the court to please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Greg David.
Present.
Mr. Tyler Dean.
Here.
Ms. Emily Hamburg.
Here.
Mr. Tom Schmitz, absent. And Mr. John Welch.
Present.
And you have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. So the agenda shows that Father Terry Hedic was going to lead us in prayer, but he is unavailable because he had some personal issues to deal with, so he, I got an email about that. So I'll lead us in prayer. In the name of your Father, please be among us and guide us in our deliberations this evening. Bless us as we attempt to do your will for the common good of the city of Bel Air. Amen. So, Fledge of Allegiance to the American Flag.
Fledge of Allegiance to the American Flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Move on to proclamation. So Flag Week is coming up, Flag Day is coming up, so citizens of Bel Air. Whereas the Second Continental Congress adopted the American flag on June fourteenth, seventeen seventy seven, and whereas June fourteenth, twenty twenty five marks the two hundred and forty eight years of displaying the American flag. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize Old Glory as a symbol of hope, inspiration, and pride for the people of the United States and around the world. And whereas in order to commemorate the adoption of our flag on August third, nineteen forty nine, the Congress, by joint resolution designated June fourteenth of each year as Flag Day. And requested that the president issue an annual proclamation designating the week in which June fourteen occurs as National Flag Week. And upon, call upon citizens of the United States to display the flag during that week. And now therefore I, Jim Benage, by the power vested in me as mayor of the city of Bel Air. And on behalf of the city council and citizens of Bel Air, do hereby proclaim the week of June eighth through fourteen, twenty twenty five as National Flag Week in the city of Bel Air, Kansas. And ask our citizens to affirm the ideals of our country by displaying our American flag at their homes. I have signed this proclamation. Move on to determine agenda additions. Are there any agenda additions to consider? Okay, and when we want to consent agenda, the city council minutes from the May twentieth regular meeting and May twenty seventh special meeting are on the consent agenda. In addition, one new appointment is on the agenda for the tree board. If confirmed, Julie Hopkins' term will begin June third and end June three, twenty twenty nine.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion by Mr. David and a second by Mr. Dean. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries four to zero. Discussion approval of the appropriations ordinance. This appropriation ordinance encompasses expenses from May fourteenth through May twenty seventh, including one payroll cycle. Expenditures amount to one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars. Of the reported expenses, three hundred and twenty five thousand, eight hundred and seventy five dollars are infrastructure costs from new developments. And these costs are paid through special assessments.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I move we approve appropriation ordinance number twenty five dash ten.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dean and a second by Ms. Hamburg. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries four to zero. So request the city appearances. This evening we have the President Green, Greg Dane, of the Bel Air Chamber of Commerce, to give us quarterly update. Mr. Dane.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. To date, we have twenty six paid members. As of last week, our current balance was seventeen thousand, one dollar and eighty seven cents. We still have actively recruiting a vice president for next year to assume the presidency of twenty twenty six. And every time I appear, I have one major goal, and that's to share life experiences that take place during the chamber meetings, in and outside the meetings. Just a little recap, April second, we hosted Trooper Chad Crittenden from the Kansas Highway Patrol from Troop F, who presented and did a great job. If you missed last month's presentation, David knew, a close friend of mine, local pickleball expert, teacher, and mentor, talked about pickleball. And you may be like, we've got pickleball everywhere. And that is true. David's intention is to grow pickleball throughout youth sports in and around Wichita. A benefactor that he wished to remain unnamed allowed them to fund and start up a five oh one C three. The name is Kansas Youth Pickleball that you can find on Facebook, and their website is kansasyouthpickleball.org. Why do I bring this up? I played varsity sports in high school and college. There's many kids that I grew up with, as kids are today, that may not be the varsity athlete type person you think about typically. David's goal is to reach people in and around the community who are looking to participate in something. As well as help them grow in life, get them through the sport, get them through life, keep them off the streets. I know that in the past meeting when he presented, he and Councilman Dean had a chance to have a one-off conversation afterwards, and I think there were some good relationships being built there. This is the fastest growing sport in the country, if you didn't know, not just Wichita. So it's a great opportunity to come out and hear speakers like that. Our goal is to always bring forth someone that's a quality speaker. That kind of gives us an idea of how to grow our community in and around. I mentioned Councilman Dean, and Tyler didn't know I was going to do this tonight, but I wanted to single him out and recognize him for defending me. He's meant a lot to me personally and professionally of reaching out saying, hey, have you thought about this member? Have you thought about this member? One in, one in particular, an example of his efforts was Crossland Construction join last month. He's also been instrumental in bringing forth tomorrow's speaker, Kelly Herzett from K two fifty four Corridor Project Association. We had another successful spring festival despite being up against a very large soccer tournament in town. Due to mechanical issues, and the mayor's familiar with this, and probably Councilman Dean, Big Sky Inflatables missed the mark that day and had some mechanical failures, but to their credit, they gave us a full refund. For what happened and promised to do better for our Fall Fest. There will be no, tomorrow's meeting, obviously, will be in the community room. We'll start networking eleven thirty with lunch at noon. But there will be no July meeting. We don't meet in July. However, on July tenth at Napa Lee's, we'll have another Chamber Mixer at four thirty, and it will run until about six, six thirty, so I hope you can come out for that. In terms of future speakers, I communicated today with one of our members, Mark Philler, who is an agent for David Curry at State Farm. He is a twenty seven year veteran of the Phoenix Police Department, actually Surprise, Arizona, relocated back here with family. And he is hopefully going to be leading us through some self-defense measures for the August meeting, and I've been in contact with Firehouse Number Thirty Seven to present for us in September. Fall Fest, again, just a reminder, and it's hard to believe that fall is just around the corner, but it will be October eighteenth from ten a.m. to two p.m. Christmas in Bel Air, December sixth, here from five thirty to seven thirty. And then the Christmas Chamber Mixer, December eleventh, at Shepherd's Crossing, from four thirty to six thirty. Again, as always, and this is what I mentioned last time, I want to emphasize that Bel Air Chamber and the city of Bel Air are partners. I appreciate the fact that I looked at the website today, on the city website, and you do have a tab there for the Chamber. If you check out our Facebook page, we currently have two hundred and sixty one subscribed to that, so it truly does take a team effort to let everyone know about the resources available in the Bel Air area. As an example, something that I thought about and was approved at our last board meeting is we're going to start recognizing members of the quarter. So tomorrow, our member of first quarter recognition is going to go to Credit Union of America. They, since for about the last couple of months, every person that walks in Credit Union of America at thirty seventh North Wood Lawn hears about the Bel Air Chamber and the city of Bel Air. I don't know if y'all knew that or not, but it actually takes place. They were one of our displayers for the Spring Festival, so they get our vision. They're also going to be sponsoring lunch tomorrow, so make sure to thank them if you see them or if you walk in the branch. But I'll be presenting a certificate to them tomorrow that I'll sign, and Kim will sign as well. So I hope you turn out, but I always am appreciative, and the board is always, and the Chamber is appreciative of the time that you grant us. We try to be good stewards of the funds that you grant us every year, so. Any questions? No, I appreciate y'all's time. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the information and update, so. Next on the agenda is citizen concerns. Do we have any citizens who wish to speak to council? Any cards? Thank you. All right, move on to council member reports. Ms. Hamburg, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended CCU A meeting on May twenty second. Nothing too earth shaking. The wastewater treatment plant's expansion is going to get really underway here in the next month or so, and we received our audit report. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Welch.
I have no report.
Mr. David.
No report. Thank you.
Mr. Dean.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a few things. Thank you. On May twenty second, I was able to participate in the event that WAMPO hosted here in our community room. Approximately a dozen people attended, including myself and our city engineer, Ann, and also Ted sat in on the, at the beginning. The event focused on vulnerable road users, or V R U's is what they're, what they're shortened, name, training. We also trained on road safety assessments, or R S As, and we actually took a group field trip out to Fifty Third and Wood Lawn. And was, were able to perform a road safety assessment as a group. I think this type of engagement is important. And as we work to improve our safety for walk, bike, roll, as we continue to partner with WAMPO, as we continue to look for grants and other funding opportunities. So I really appreciate Ted and Ann for participating and for helping host here in Bel Air. I know Kim with WAMPO was excited to be able to do it here in Bel Air with our grant that we got on Fifty Third. So obviously with that intersection, we talked a lot about what's, what's coming next. So anyway, just wanted to thank WAMPO, the K U Transportation Center for Safety, for offering that training opportunity. And then the second thing I have, and I'm sure Ted will touch on it too, but I'll go ahead and say it. I've attended this event the last few years, the cops and bobbers event that our P D puts on. They do a great job. It is June seventh, this Saturday, from nine to noon here in the Central Park Ponds, and there has been a few questions of if you need a fishing license. Well, the great thing is, is it's coordinated during the week that Kansas, the state of Kansas, allows you to fish for free without a license, so I don't think that that's an accident. I think that maybe our P D did a good job, and I think other communities do a good job of trying to line that up. So anyway, appreciate our P D and hope to see you there on Saturday.
Thank you. I'll move on to Mayor's report. On May twenty second, I attended the C C A board meeting as well. And as Ms. Hamburg talked about, we had our auditor's report, presented their issues, and the only one of material weaknesses identified is a year-end journal entries concerning depreciation schedules. Since our quasi-government, their cash basis entity, so those journal entries for depreciation usually affect profit and loss on a cruel accounting basis, so they don't really have a lot of effect. But it is something our bookkeepers are now aware of, and will be making those entries at the end of the year. We also approved some repairs to Park City Well Number Eight. This well needs to be re-drilled, and that's something being considered in the twenty twenty six budget. This repair will end up with a new pump that is used on other wells, so it will be a good backup pump if needed. And I did review with the C C A board our intended process for keeping track of the wastewater treatment upgrade. We will advise the board that payments related to upgrade will not be presented to the board for approval since the contract and bonds already have been approved. We will get monthly reports of what was paid the last month and total paid to date, along with budget for the, for the payments. Also, Tony, our utility manager, will keep track of the progress and report progress to the schedule. And we offered the board to advise if they wanted to do this differently, but no one offered an alternative, so the consensus to move forward with this plan. Is always, we can always change it if there's a desire to do so. On May twenty eighth, the precinct committee, men and committee women of Kansas eighty fifth Legislative District selected Steve Brunk to replace Patrick Penn. Mr. Penn resigned to become the Deputy Undersecretary of the U.S. Department of Agriculture effective June thirteenth. Mr. Brunk served as the eighty fifth representative for about ten years until he resigned in twenty sixteen, so he will be back in his old job. The eighty fifth district represents all of Bel Air east of Wood Lawn, and I serve as precinct committee man for this section of Bel Air. Today, Ted Henry and I attended the Water Reuse Summit put on by the city of Wichita. You may remember Gary Jansen provided an overview of Wichita activities related to drought at our last city council meeting. In part of that presentation, he gave a brief overview of the things Wichita is doing with water reuse. This is basically an update of that presentation. He did express that it is highly unlikely we will be out of stage two drought restrictions for the remainder of the year. And those restrictions are based on a twelve month average, so as to not overreact to spikes in data, like the lead, like the recent rains that we've had today in the last week or so. This is a prudent approach as we must try to avoid going to stage three restrictions, that as that will be hard, maybe detrimental to many businesses. So we will stay in the stage, stage two drought restrictions regardless of all this rain, okay? Four inches in the last twenty four hours. It's pretty amazing. City council election this year has four candidates, Mr. Greg David, Mr. Tom Schmidt, Mr. Brandon McIntosh, and Mr. Michael Porter Proctor. And as such, Bel Air City Council will not be on the primary ballot in August. The election will be in November. But USD two fifty nine Wichita District One, which covers all of Bel Air, and not covered, that is not covered by the Circle School District, which is those residences east of the northeast magnet. They do have four candidates, and as such, we will have a primary in August for those four candidates. Those candidates are Diane Albert, Kyle Wiseman, Mackenzie Truelove, and Sarah McMillan. It does not appear, from the best information I can obtain, that USD two, three seventy seven Circle School District will have a primary for those in the Circle School District. So I'll now ask our city attorney for her report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to give a brief update regarding a new law from the last legislative session. It is called the Kansas Municipal Employee Whistleblower Act. On April seventh, twenty twenty five, Governor Kelly signed House Bill two one six zero, called the Municipal Employee Whistleblower Act. It establishes whistleblower protections for municipal employees who report unlawful or unauthorized conduct committed by a municipality or its officers. The entire purpose of the act is to quote unquote, enhance transparency and accountability in local government. Ensuring that municipal employees can report wrongdoing without any fear of retaliation. Some of the key provisions are that municipal employees, if they want to discuss a matter of public concern with any member of the governing body, they may. Any member of an auditing agency that they may. If they would like to report violations of federal, state, or local laws or regulations, they can. Failure to give notice to a supervisor or appointing authority prior to reporting a violation of law, they are protected in this specific act. Disclosing any type of unlawful conduct or misappropriation of money by any member, officer, or employee of the governing body, they may do so. There is no requirement that this specific concern be a hundred percent substantiated, as long as the individual has a good faith belief. I wanted to also let council know that within this act, Kansas municipalities may not prohibit or take any type of disciplinary action against that municipal employee. For engaging in any, in any of the conduct that I just listed in those key provisions. The act also goes into detail about any type of disciplinary action, such as a dismissal, a demotion, a transfer, a reassignment, suspension, reprimand, or warning. All of those types of definitions, those words, those terms are included to make sure that there is no type of retaliation. Sometimes I'm asked by council, how did this specific bill come into being? Well, it did originate in the House Committee on Local Government. There was proponent testimony provided. The testimony was that there is a need to protect people at all levels of government, and the bill would put a process in place for people to utilize when they want to help. And they have concerns about being protected. There is a requirement in the law that this be posted on the walls here in our building. At every municipal organizational building, the League of Kansas Municipalities is putting together some posters, and they will provide them to our municipality and others for free at no cost, and those will be posted when they're received.
Thank you. Did they provide any kind of a hotline or anything like that for reporting issues?
Not within the specific bill.
Okay, all right. Very good. Thank you. Appreciate the information. Mr. Henry, your manager's report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot of my thunder was stolen here earlier, but Chamber, Chamber of Commerce meeting tomorrow, eleven thirty, City Hall. President Dane really highlighted the pickleball speaker they had last month, and boy, it made me really look at pickleball a lot harder when we're talking about improving parks and whatnot. It's a really interesting concept and how it builds community. Cops and Bobbers this Saturday, nine to noon, Central Park Ponds. One thing, if you ever meet my, my police officers, one thing they have in common, they're all avid hunters and fisher, fishermen. So even if you think you know what fishing's all about, you might learn something on Saturday if you stop by. Lot of water in a short period of time today. Always a fun, a fun day for cities, and if you, if you've read the news or seen the news, a lot of areas got hit really hard. I just want to, Marty's sitting in the audience, and Glenn, Public Works, we did a lot of work on Trip Seven last year, last summer, really paid dividends today. We're not perfect. Nothing's going to be perfect when you get that many inches in that, that soon. However, we did identify some other areas that we're going to continue to. we did identify some other areas that we're going to continue to work on and continue to make Bel Air as safe and as, as, as drought or as a flood, flood, what do you call it? Our stormwater system as best as it can be. That's all I got tonight, Mr. Mayor, and we'll talk later about other things. So thanks.
Very good. Thank you. And I appreciate that the fact that we did do some preventative things in Trip 7 and other areas to prevent flooding, because you, once the rains come, it's too late to go address it. So thank you, Marty, and everybody else who has worked to, to make this happen, to keep these things in, in, in good shape. So move on to ordinance resolutions and final actions. First item on the agenda is resolution authorizing 50% ad valorem property tax exemption. So in 2019, the city issued industrial revenue bonds for WAM Investor Investments LLC. The letter in intent required WAM to make a capital investment of $1,750,000 and add 12 full-time employees. The IRB and associated tax abatements were granted for a total of 10 years, with a 95% ad valorem property tax exemption for the first five-year term, followed by a 50% ad valorem property tax exemption for the additional five-year term. The LOI stipulated that the five-year mark, the city would review WAM's compliance, and if capital investments and job creation targets were met, the council would consider extending the tax abatements for the final five years. As of today, Phase One of WAM Investments has a appraised value of $2,425,200, and, and 48 new jobs have been created, well beyond the initial projection. Overall, the project has been a success. WAM Investments has provided valuable services to our city by constructing medium-sized mixed-use commercial spaces, for example, home-based businesses that have been outgrown. Their initial setups can expand in Bel Air instead of relocating to Wichita or other areas. WAM has met the capital investment and job creation requirements. Therefore, I recommend approving the additional five-year tax abatement extension. And Chris Mattson with WAM Capital is here to answer questions. Mr. Mattson?
All right. Thank you, Mayor and council members. It's kind of interesting to think about 2019, six years ago, and how fast that time has gone. We talked about the initial investment of 1.7 million. I'm happy to report we actually hit 3.4 million of total expenses on this property. So we nearly doubled that number, which is pretty amazing. You mentioned the job creation, and obviously that's far exceeded our expectations as well. So just want to say how much we appreciate the city of Bel Air, all the services you guys provide and the support. It's been a pretty easy sell for us getting tenants in there and businesses to come to Bel Air. So I'd be open to any questions you might have.
Yeah, I have Phase Two almost done?
Phase Two was just wrapped up about two weeks ago.
Well, it is done now.
It is done. We've got two tenants moving in, and we have a third one that we move in in about two weeks. So we're standing well on our way. So it's doing great as well. Future chamber members.
Yes, you need to go visit them. Okay, great. That's good. That's good news. Any questions for Mr. Mattson?
Thanks for being here. Yeah, absolutely. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So we have a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean, or David.
A motion to approve a resolution authorizing a 50% ad valorem property tax exemption for five years to WAM Investments, number 11 LLC, as presented and authorized the mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion for Mr. David, second by Mr. Welch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries four to zero. Next item is amendment to Tyler Technologies' contracts. So Tyler Technologies has provided amendments in city's agreement with them related to credit card fees. City Attorney Maria Schrock has reviewed the amendment, and it has now come before the council for consideration. Staff is also available to answer questions. We approved this last city council meeting, or I think it was on May 6th. That was the last one. But now they came back with a contract amendment to incorporate those same changes. Any questions or discussion? If there are none, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the amendment with Tyler Technologies that incorporates the ERP pro-payment service fee option and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Hamburg, a second by Mr. David. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Next item is a purchase contract for a 252 tons of one-inch hard rock. So following quote from the purchase of the road gravel, and this is for Aurora Park, this will enable improvements in the gravel roads in that Aurora Park area. The rock quote was recommended by Gravel Roads Task Force, and we are currently performing ditch work in the area. And once completed, we will proceed with installing the new rock. And Director of Public Works, Marty McGee, is here to answer questions. And this rock is to stabilize the road so that all that work we're doing on the drainage will be stabilized.
As you all know, we're, you know what the progress is up there and what we're doing. And this is the second step. So just any questions on what needs to be done, or do we need to proceed with this? Or that's, that's what we're here for. And the quote was the same as two years ago when we got the last rock. So they honored that. So.
Same price. That was good. I was glad to see that. I was hoping we could get a better deal because they were buying so much more, but that didn't come together.
The prices did go up, and he did fight to keep where we were. So I was happy with that.
That's great.
Seventeen dollars a ton, I think is what it was, and 15 for delivery. So it's not too bad.
Are you just going to spread this on top or work it in with what's there?
Same thing. We'll, we'll cut down two to three inches in, in the subgrade, give it, give it a stable base, and then put the rock on top of that. It worked great for the last time. It's not gone into the ditches at all. It's staying on the road. I think we did a good job last time, and that's what we're going to do this time.
So, so what do you do with the two inches you take off?
It's sitting in our yard right now. We'll end up putting it in the holes on the streets, you know, potholing around the edge of the streets and stuff like that. So we'll find a place, or we'll build a burn, put some dirt over top of it, and put some grass on it. I mean, we'll find a place eventually.
Well, that's great. Yeah. And I'm glad that it's working because I think there's two advantages to this rock. Is, is one is it apparently doesn't have the dust issue, and the other is it probably slows traffic down quite a bit, too.
Yeah, I think it does. At the beginning, I think after the year, the first year, I think the traffic's picked up a little bit, but it's, I think it's fine.
I want to talk about the speed, not the frequency.
Right, okay.
Yeah, because you have those rocks sitting in the bottom of your car. You don't want to go very fast, right? Yeah.
Marty, I think the way you're proposing to do it, to like slot it in there, it kind of holds it in. It does keep it from probably rolling out into the ditches. So I think your procedure is probably helping it stay in place and maybe giving it a little bit of compaction, too. But no, I agree. You could probably reuse some of that to fill in shoulders and stuff like that. But appreciate your work on this. And I know the citizens over there are going to really appreciate having it in, so.
I hear it every day. That's why we're, where we're at. I think it's a good thing. I think we ought to do it, move forward with it. But you guys tell me what we need to do.
Well, if there are no more comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Me.
I move we approve purchase contract with North Ridge Trucking for 752 tons of one-inch hard rock at a cost not to exceed $24,064 and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. Motion for Mr. Dean, a second by Mr. Welch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries four to zero. I see that we have Neil, Neil Gosh and Katie here. And so I'd like to move on to the executive session. How much time do we need for the executive session?
It's going to be a 30-minute executive session.
Thirty-minute executive session. So I'm going to ask us to go to the 30-minute executive session, and then we'll come back to the rest of the agenda items after that.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean, or Mr. David.
A motion to recess into executive session to discuss with legal counsel and receive legal advice related to pending litigation. Discussion will be pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2 for legal consultation with Neil Gosh, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. Invite the city manager, city engineer, city attorney, and Catherine Klumsky. The meeting will be for a period of 30 minutes, and the open meeting will resume in city council chambers at 8:06.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dean, a second by Mr. Welch. All in favor.
Mr. David.
Mr., I'm sorry. You're right. Thank you. Motion by Mr. David and a second by Mr. Welch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries four to zero, and executive session for 30 minutes. Motion carries four to zero and executive session for 30 minutes.
Okay, we held an executive session, no binding action was taken, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We'll move on to item D, this is a consideration of change order request number one from Mies Construction. This pertains to a change order for Chapel Landing Six. The city engineer Anne Stevens is here to provide explanation and address any questions.
So there was, there's been a lot of discussion on this change order. And I asked Jared with Baughman to come in in case there's any questions that I cannot answer. But basically what happened is the developer that is working on Chapel Landing Six is the same developer that built Chapel Landing Phase Two. So Chapel Landing Phase Two is in the red, Chapel Landing Sixth is outlined in the blue. So they're pretty close to one another. When the original design of Chapel Landing Phase Two occurred, Baughman was instructed to set it up for slab homes, which is a little bit different. You need to have the homes a little bit higher and there's different dirt calculations involved. Then after that was bid, after that was built, the developer decided, oh, I want to do basements instead. So there's extra dirt coming from that, that development. In the meantime, Baughman's working on the development, on the plans for Chapel Landing Sixth. And during that design, it was noted that they needed more dirt for Chapel Landing Six to make it work, to make it viable. There is no pond on this project, there's an agreement, drainage agreement with Prairie Preserve, which is south, where the water, the storm water from Chapel Landing Sixth goes and it meets our requirements with that addition. So they needed more dirt, same developers working on both projects. The dirt from Chapel Landing Phase Two came over to Chapel Landing Sixth, that was always planned. There was bid documents put together that did include some, the spreading of the dirt that came from Chapel Landing Phase Two to Chapel Landing Sixth. But there was not an accurate measurement at the time of how much dirt was available. Additionally, the developer continued to put dirt on that site. So that's kind of where we're at. This is basically a reconciliation change order to pay Mies, the contractor, for moving the dirt that was already on site. And Jared, do you have anything to add or is that pretty accurate? Okay, so with that, so basically, I mean, we, we do this on some items when we know we're going to have a certain quantity, we'll put in a estimated amount and then figure that well, the exact quantities will come in later, which is kind of where we're at. We did get the bid amount from Mies, which is what we're using to calculate this change order.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I do have a few questions and I, I sent some of these to Anne ahead of time, so hopefully she's prepared. And thank you for presenting and kind of clarifying some of the interactions between the other section that developer is doing. But a couple of clarifications, so it was always planned that dirt was going to come from the Chapel Landing Second or the other developer's property to this property. It was never an intention that that dirt was going to have to be hauled off and wasted elsewhere.
Not, that was not the original intention of Chapel Landing Phase Two because it was supposed to be slab on grade homes.
Gotcha.
And then during the process, at some point, the developer decided to switch. So there really was never an intent for, we didn't think that there would be any dirt available, we thought that there would probably need to haul in dirt for Chapel Landing Sixth because we needed extra dirt for the site.
Got it, and then so.
And then this was a convenient.
So that was my second question, was Chapel Landing Sixth, it was determined that you needed more import material. So this was useful for that project.
Correct.
Is there more import needed above that stockpile or is this really kind of it? Or I guess was it designed, was the new design including all this extra dirt? Or is there more dirt coming hauled off from a different site?
Jared, can you come up to the microphone?
So this extra dirt that is, was generated from Chapel Landing Phase Two will help the earthwork balance on Chapel Landing Sixth. The site will still be short, but the contractor has specific notation in the plans to build it right away than the setbacks and then kind of progress it out for the site. Then he will use his basement dirt that he generates from building houses on Chapel Landing Sixth to fulfill.
Fill it out.
So there is no more, no more planned imports, no more cost in relation to that for this project.
Gotcha, and so that, that kind of leads to my next question, so the $5 per cubic yard, that's a pretty high dirt number for dirt that's sitting on site. Usually if you have to truck it in from somewhere, some distance, that tends to increase the cost. Usually a balanced site situation where you just have a stockpile that's awarded to you, just sitting there to be able to just use to balance the site. I assume that number is coming from just what was in the bid with the original quantity. And I guess so where I'm going with that is, is was there other import dirt that already came to the site that costs $5? And what we've essentially done here is there's a stockpile already on site that were then being charged for them to balance the site. So I'm just trying to understand how this unit cost applies kind of to how the contractor would have bid.
So the contractor had bid, the way the bidding documents for Chapel Landing Six had worked was all four projects were bid together. So Mies Construction was the prime for paving contract. We only had one excavation bid quantity and that ex, uh, bid item was located in the street project. So they were forced to put all of their excavation in the street excavation number.
Gotcha.
So there, there is an inflated for that $5, yes.
So you, you're seeing what I'm saying, that that number does look for being a balanced site, looks a little high, but what you're saying is all that dirt is coming from all four of the phases of it, the water, the storm, all the earthwork quantities are included in that unit.
Yes, and the original bid items, all the excavation for Chapel Landing Sixth was bid at $5 a cubic yard. So we just took that number to pay them to excavate that stockpile and then spread it along the side.
Sounds good. Well, that's all I had, I just had, I was just trying to clarify how the two sites were working. It's the same developer, which is great, it's nice to be able to waste dirt nearby, get rid of it, because I have, I'll just say this, I've had some folks contact me personally and complain about the stockpile that's in the other development and how it hasn't disappeared as fast as they'd like. So I'm happy to see that it is starting to disappear and it's for benefit of another project. But just wanted to get those answered, thank you.
Any other questions for city engineer or the contractor engineer?
This is all being charged back to the developer and it becomes part of the specialist's cost, correct?
That is correct, it is not a direct city cost.
And it's all going, being charged to the sixth?
That is correct.
If there are no other questions or concerns, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I don't know enough to do otherwise, so I'm going to trust Anne on this. Make a motion to approve change order number one to remove the existing dirt stockpile at Chapel Landing Sixth Edition at a cost not to exceed $34,500 and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Welch, a second by Mr. Dean. Before we go to vote, I do want to say thank you for updating the change order because it was confusing ways earlier, but I think that date clarified it quite well, thank you. So any other questions or discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries four to zero. Next item is engagement letter with our Allen Gibson-Hulick. Audit engagement letter outlines terms and scope of annual audit services provided by our auditing firm, which is also known as AGH. This includes reviewing the city's financial statements, ensuring compliance with accounting standards and providing an independent assessment. The staff is available to answer any questions. We get to do these every year.
That was my first question, how does this compare to last year's cost?
Pretty much the same, yeah, the, the biggest one would be the next agenda, agenda item would be the difference.
The cost of getting all the benefits that you didn't ask for.
Exactly, the gift that keeps on giving.
Right. Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the engagement letter with Allen Gibson-Hulick for 2024 annual audit services at a cost not to exceed $36,500 as presented and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Hamburg, a second by Mr. Dean. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. And the next item is an additional engagement letter for AGH for specific audit services related to the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund. The service ensures that the funds received from the federal government are being managed and spent in compliance. The staff is available to answer questions with this. And how much did we get of this coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund?
So it's maybe 1.2 in ARPA and then 4.7 in base, so it's quite a bit.
All right.
So $7,000 is not that much compared to what.
$7,000 to get this money.
The benefit we received.
Yeah.
This is a one-time fee then?
Yeah.
One time.
We'll have it, we'll have it again next year, so hold your.
That's a two-time.
It'll be, it'll be two times.
While we have a contract open for the public works.
Correct.
Kind of interesting, we have to do these audits of things we do, but then Doge finds all kinds of things that are not being audited that are much more money than this. But it's an interesting phenomenon. Any questions or discussion on this item? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
A motion to approve the engagement letter with Allen Gibson-Hulick LC for CSLR, CSLFRF Audit Services at a cost not to exceed $7,000 as presented. And authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second. A motion by Mr. Welch, a second by Mr. David. I'll call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries four to zero. Next item is amending our solid waste utility and curbside recycling fee. So this is, there's two items related to this. The solid waste collection and recycling agreement with Waste Connection approved in 2016 allows for the annual 2% free fee increase upon request by Waste Connections. At the May 20th meeting, council approved a 2% increase in fees and this resolution will similarly increase fees passed on to customers by 2%. The administrative fee charged will remain unchanged and the ordinance will amend the city code accordingly. And staff is available to answer questions on this. The one question I had is on the fee for recycling, there's an administrative fee, but citizens don't have an option on recycling, they have to pay that regardless of whether they take it or not. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I, I, I'm just trying to understand the, the theory behind charging administrative fee on a service they don't have an option on.
Really what, what we look at, what the, if you remember last year, we did a lot of good work on this separated and it used to be just a total fee for trash and recycling and we tried to separate what, what waste can, our, our hauler charges versus what it costs to administer the program on our side. And I think the, to answer your question, Councilmember Benage, you don't have a choice for recycling system, but you do have a choice on garbage collection, which not many take. But I guess that would be my short answer to you is for, for the individuals that maybe don't take reci, or trash through our contracted hauler. The other, really what, what, if I remember right, a year or two ago, I think we looked at what it costs us to provide that administrative and set the fees accordingly. So if you would like us to zero out the recycle cart, we'd probably have to increase the administrative fee on the solid waste to make sure that we're covering our expenses on the.
We're looking for options, I want to understand the thought, the thought process. Okay, thank you. So there's two items here, item G and H, and item G has to do with the, I don't know, what is the difference between these two? They both say almost the same thing.
Mr. Mayor, item G is regarding the ordinance. The council approved an ordinance, it was 358 back in 2002 that talked about the specifically solid waste utility and curbside recycling system. That ordinance does not include administration fees. Although the council approved it in a resolution last year, the original ordinance wasn't updated to include the administration fees. That is where your authority comes from. This ordinance would update it to include the administrative, administration fees. This ordinance would update it to include the administrative, administration fees and going forward. If there was ever another increase to a hauler, uh, those fees would be set. And the administration fees are already included in the original ordinance. If for any reason staff would like to inc- um, increase those fees, it could be done by a resolution per the original ordinance. And then the item I is the resolution that talks about the specific fees that are increased. Based upon the two percent increase from Mister Herschel West the last time he spoke. So one is the original ordinance, the underlying that's updated. And then the second item is the resolution for the new fees giving residents notification. That theirs will be increased due to that two percent raise rate. Does that help?
Yeah, so item G is revising the ordinance and item H is authorizing the new fee schedule. Okay, thank you. If there's no question or discussion, we can entertain the motions for these, for item G.
Mister Mayor.
Mister Dean.
I move we adopt an ordinance amending the solid waste utility and curb side recycling system to establish administration, administrative. Fees and repeal ordinance number three fifty-eight as presented and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Mister Dean, a second by Mister David. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero and then move on to item H, which is the actual fees.
Make a motion to approve a res- resolution amending the solid waste utility and curb side. Recycling system fees as presented and authorize the mayor to sign.
A second.
A motion by Mister Welch, a second by Miss Hamburg. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Item H, so since council previously approved current street maintenance programs with mill and overlay. We need to find a way to minimize disruption of this project due to the unforeseen issues with road subsurface. This action would keep the process moving along and not require special city council meetings to approve what needs to be done anyway. Ted Henry has some additional data to share regarding this action.
So we had a pretty good day yesterday. Um, they milled Kruger and uh, only found minor soft spots, so. Hopefully, in this delay with the rain, uh, doesn't break up much more, but. Uh, we're looking at a, a change order under ten thousand for that particular section. As you know, we have the rest of Long Terrace to do. One thing we do want to review constantly is um, our budget on this, it's one point nine uh, for the total project. With the nine thousand dollar change order uh, received today. That brings us a little under fifty thousand dollars left for that total project budget. Um, assuming we did do some anns here if she needs to fill in, but we did do some um. Drilling of the rest of that neighborhood, there was nothing too alarming that we found. I think we can say, but as you, as you know, and that was what we said previously, you can drill holes. But you don't know what the next section over and the next section over is. Um, so, once the rain clears up, we'll mill the rest of Long Terrace neighborhood and uh, find out for sure. The, what's before you tonight is to allow uh, the mayor and I to um, have some sort of amount we can pass. To allow the mayor and I to approve a change order if issues do arise and what amount that should be. Um, right now in our street fund, and if you remember. Governmental finance is a little different. You have a general fund that mainly funds our operations. You have a water fund which. What, which funds our water operations, a sewer fund. We also have a street fund. And that's what this budget represents is our street fund. Our street fund is mainly funded by state and local taxes, or sorry, state and local fuel taxes. And a transfer from our general fund. About three years ago, we decided to make this one million dollar contribution each year to the street fund. To make sure we are maintaining our streets. Inside this fund, we, we have some personnel that we um, fund because you're right. Marty and the guys, they uh, take care of our streets. At the end of the year, we try to budget as close as we can, but we have reserves that sometime come up inside this fund. Right now, with spending one point nine million dollars, we'll have about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars left. In this fund and reserves. Now, what that does is allows us to do more. Um, street maintenance in future years, however, if we do happen to go over budget for this particular project. We can tap those funds to complete the project as promised in this year. That would be my suggestion if for any reason we mill. Um, the rest of Long Terrace neighborhood and find something over fifty thousand dollars in a change order. Where would we get that money? Would be the reserves of the street fund. Um, that wouldn't hurt the city's position in future, it would just uh, essentially have, have less money to do more street work the next year. However, the first thing we would do next year is complete this year's work, so really it, it's, it's not a, that big of a detriment. To our budget. Um, that would be the proposal before you. Um, we opened a discussion, but I hope I is clear in, in our intentions.
Mister Mayor.
Thank you, Mister David.
I'm not following the resolution. Is it, it's saying a change order of a hundred and fifty thousand as long as it's budgeted in the. Street maintenance fund? Or can you exceed that with that authority?
So, so with uh, the, the street maintenance fund is uh, what, what you can do is you'd amend the fund. Um, and amending, you only have to, you have till the end of December to amend, so we would have some sort of amending budget. And we've done it in the past in November or October to amend, to get that, that money uh, above the line.
This would just authorize that Ted and I together would authorize a change over up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right, I understand the purpose, the sense of urgency, but it really authorizes you to go over budget.
Yeah, you're gonna, i- if you do that, you're absolutely right, and that's why you will have to do a budget modification. At, at some point before the end of the year.
That's why I think it should just be a special meeting, if you're going over budget.
And it.
And the, the issue that we're trying to mitigate against here is, is slowing the project down. Keeping contractors engaged, because as you, if you start jerking them around too much. You start getting a reputation, well, they would just jerk around contractors and so nobody wants to bid you. And that's not good, and or you run the risk of increasing cost because they demobilized.
If it, if it comforts you, I can kind of explain a little bit of, so that, that's just a representation of a full spend out of a year. Up on the screen. Right now, we've maybe spent uh, maybe uh, you know, uh. Let's see here, um. We might, we might be able to stay. So the budget authority rests in the total expenditure, not the line item, so what I'm saying is, is there could be a potential where we don't go actually over the. Expenditure line, because we still have personnel to pay throughout the year and that sort of thing, so. I, I don't want to confuse you even further, but there is some authority in that fund uh, that we could use. That maybe not tied to that line item, uh, where if, if that's a, a, a pressure point. We can go back and amend the budget before we go over budget. Does that make sense? Not really, but I, I, I'm really confusing you, but.
But I think I could, I could modify the resolution.
Okay.
To just say that as long as it doesn't exceed the, the current budget allocations or, or something.
So that would really cap, that would really cap us at, uh, well. This is where we get into the weeds a little bit, because the budget for the project would be. Fifty thousand dollars.
Right, I was hoping for the budget for the project, that's why it's a change order, right?
Well, not necessarily. Uh, the budget for the pro- if you remember. The project came in well under budget, so what, what these change orders are doing is bringing us back closer to the budget. Uh, because we, the, the base bid came in well under the budget, the base bid came in at one point two.
So, make sure I understand that forty-seven, just say forty-eight thousand dollars there. If we subtract out the ten thousand dollar change order. It's already, it's already included in there, so we have forty-eight thousand dollars of basically. Things can go wrong, up to forty-eight thousand dollars in lawn terrace before you'd even have to dip into. The street fund or amend the budget, correct?
Correct.
And then you've got four hundred and some K in the budget.
The budget.
And that's, that's all, sounds like great planning, sounds like we're fine. I just don't like the way the resolution reads, that seems like you could go over that, that four fifty if you, if you, if you had to.
So, so here's kind of my example, and you know, street repair materials, we have fifty thousand dollars budgeted. Marty's hasn't spent fifty thousand dollars in pothole repairs yet this year. So that's also budget authority we could tap. So, so that's kind of where I'm, uh, the, the, the state of Kansas. Only makes you set that bottom line number, not necessarily each line item in your budget, but we're getting deep into budgeting right now. So I don't want to confuse the situation further. I think our main concern is exposing the road for a long. Or for having a special meeting and exposed the road creates a little bit of. Um, time delay um, in, in this type of project.
So right now, we budgeted one point nine million. And we have forty-seven thousand left of that that we have not allocated.
Correct.
Correct. And if we do what you're proposing, we're gonna dip into our reserve fund.
In the, in the street maintenance.
In the street maintenance. What happens if something else comes along that we need street maintenance money for? Such as the Kruger.
Sure.
Bridge, that's not the right term, but the culvert started to collapse and we weren't prepared for that. And if something else like that happens someplace in the city, how are we gonna pay for that?
Sure, so and that's when we go back to our priorities and we have about one point eight million dollars in our capital improvement program right now. We have some projects lined up, but if that creates a bigger priority, we might tap some capital improvement funds. For emergency purposes. The other area we have is the general fund also has a uh, reserve amount that we could draw on. Um, and do a transfer from general to street.
Okay, well, my point is I don't really like dipping into our reserves at all. Uh, it, it's okay with me to spend them the next year if we didn't need them, but. I, I'd like to have something here for the rest of the year, we still got six months to go. And anything could happen, uh, could have happened today with all the water going, if it would gone across the streets, we could have washed out a street in several places. And that could easily chew up this five hundred thousand dollars.
Ted, I'll go ahead and say like, I, I appreciate the, the thought of how do we make this process maybe smoother is a good word. And, and give you a chance to make those calls in the field. One of the things that I asked the la- at the last meeting and Luke Peter confirmed was, how much do we have left to spend that's already in the budget? I think the number was like two hundred and seventy thousand or that was including Kruger and the rest of, of Long Terrace. And the reason why I asked that question is I felt comfortable thinking if we're removing Kruger and we're replacing, and we're removing this street and replacing it. It kind of buffers us and gives us a chance to not. Essentially, what you were saying was that's something we would just do next year, right? Because what I was getting at is if we got into the situation where Kruger did need a full replacement, we needed a hundred thousand dollars, we would just scale back. The scope, and I get your point, that that's probably gonna be the first thing on the list next year. Um, so I, I at least appreciate, this is another way of skinning the cat, so to speak. My way of skinning the cat may have been a little more conservative, because it was, let's go slow enough that we could. Sort of tweak and make the adjustment on the fly. This maybe gives you a little bit more leash than that. Um, one of the suggestions, I actually visited with Maria this week. Um, about change orders in general, I was in here for something else and one of the suggestions I made, and that probably won't work, it will not work for this. But maybe in the future was on road maintenance projects, maybe in the future, and we'll start getting more history on this, but maybe we, maybe we put in a. Contingency item in the bid that allows us to approve the project with a certain amount in it. That Ann has sort of flexibility to, to use for overruns and soft spots and. Oh, there's a curb that wasn't in the scope, but we should do that, those little things that she could make that decision and we don't have to, we've already approved, right? The project including it. That's not gonna fix it here, and I think I suggested that maybe that's a way we could sort of. Make it so that we're not having these issues. We have maybe ten percent built in to help with that. Not saying we have to use it, again, that's something contractually you can deduct out of the contract at the end. It's not gonna help us here, but I'm just throwing that out. As it may be a solution for a future road maintenance project to, to kind of put some amount in so that we're not. De- dealing with this, now obviously that's not gonna cover a massive change order, which it shouldn't. Uh, but anyway, I just wanted to make that point, but I, I like this idea of, of giving you some flexibility. Um, and if we have the reserves and you feel comfortable that you can manage it and staff can manage our contractors. I think it's a good idea to be able to keep the project moving. I would hate to lose a contractor, because they have a lot of work and they're gonna leave, because they keep getting stalled out, or maybe they request a change order. Because they need to re-mob or, there's all sorts of things that we could start encountering if we don't get a better feel for how we manage this. So I'm comfortable with this amount. Um, it doesn't feel unfair considering. Uh, you're trying to cover us in that situation where we might have a full replacement so that we can make that decision.
And if they, if they mill all and we find no soft spots or very like kind of. That, then it's all based into the big budget or the base budget and we don't have to worry about this. We're just trying to get ahead of the game. I was on, on a call with a lot of city managers in the area. We're not alone in this problem, guys. It, it happens everywhere and to your point, some city managers will bake in five percent. Just say, hey, we're gonna find five percent soft spots and do it with the base budget, but that's probably for next year for us to discuss, but.
You don't not tell you have historical data.
This is, this is a known problem that we're dealing with.
I mean, I'll, I'm just gonna make one more statement. I think this was covered last time, I think uh, Commissioner Tom actually mentioned it. You know, for as old as these roads are, I mean, most of them are forty or fifty years old. I'm really surprised we're not having to full reconstruct more of the roads. You know, one way we could be, you could go real conservative and start designing and budgeting to completely replace all of these roads. Full reconstruction. We're not gonna get very far with our budget doing that. So this is a really good conservative approach where we're trying to go in and rehab roads that are fifty years old. We're gonna just find places that you can't rehab. So I think we're actually doing a decent job of balancing, you know, the conservative approach to the finance piece with the logistics of. The real world of roads are fifty years old and they probably, some of them are just gonna need replaced. So anyway, I just wanted to make that comment. I appreciate staff um, coming up with creative ways that we can try to manage that.
So one of my thoughts on this is, we have a plan to finish these roads this year. And I'd hate for us to stop on these roads and, and put them off to next year, because you're still gonna end up doing the roads, right? So, I, I, that's why I, I encourage us, encourage everyone to, to support this idea. So that we can go on and get this completed this year. And I understand the concerns about what if other issues happen, and there are, uh, there are. Uh, opportunities within our budget to, to modify the budget for those catastrophic things that you didn't plan for. You didn't know about. I get that, that that's always a risk that you always have with any budget, so. That's why you have reserve funds.
The other small elemental, that's probably, it's pertinent to this discussion is when we were doing the Odessa work and had ran in all those problems. There was a misstep, we tagged all the doors in Long Terrace that said you're getting a new road, uh, I believe that's right. Um, well, we contractor, because they're just thinking ahead. So these residents have been tagged that we're gonna replace their roads, so that, that's what makes your, makes it a little more. Difficult in delivering as promised with this particular project.
I, I've got several things I want to say and I've been getting behind on the comments, because people keep going on and then say something else. To Tyler Dean's suggestion about building in a reserve amount, that's a perfectly valid suggestion. It's good for next year. We did it for the new city building.
Right.
Okay, and that's something we should do next year. I like that idea and I, I think we should be doing it. I don't care that we tag the doors, residents will understand that they're not getting their street this year and know it's next year. I, that's not a valid argument in my opinion for why we should do this. And I still don't think we should be digging into the reserve funds. I'm okay with if we would say that we can go a hundred and fifty thousand into this reserve fund right now because of the situation. But I'd like to rewrite this motion before we do that. So I think we should stick a few words in here. Uh, talking about jointly approve any change orders, I think it should be jointly approve any additional change orders. And you said up to a hundred and fifty thousand, I think it should be up to a total of a hundred and fifty thousand. Because the way it's written, you could do multiple a hundred and fifty thousands and I don't want to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's fair.
And cross our fingers and our eyes and everything else that we don't have to do anything more than what we've done on Kruger because I expected that to be the worst road.
Do you want to make that motion, Mr. Welch?
If everybody else is down arguing. And but I don't mean arguing in a bad sense.
Discussing this issue.
Yes, I get it.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I was gonna jump in. I I want to finish the work because there's the mobilization cost and they're there, then they had their eyes on it. And and we've I've been pointing back to our November workshop to somebody that asked me on, you know, like Glendale. Thought this is what we're going to do. So I like the idea of working the plan and then we we learned about fifty year old streets. We're going to build in a buffer um and expect these things. So um and I do like um Councilmember Welch and and Councilmember David's concerns about making sure we're clear about not individual one fifty, but in in total. So I'm going to support this motion for doing that uh this year and dipping into reserves.
And and we welcome the adjustments to the motion. That that's that was the intent of we weren't planning on multiple a hundred and fifty.
We know that wasn't your intent.
We're trying to cap it at a certain amount.
We mostly trust you, but we want to put the guide drills in. Okay, I think everybody's done. I'm going to motion to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager and the mayor to jointly approve any additional change orders up to a total of a hundred and fifty thousand to the twenty twenty five street maintenance project. Such change orders will presented to the city council the next regularly scheduled meeting for information only since this motion approves the change order in advance, subject to the approval of the city manager or mayor.
One second.
My motion, Mr. Welch, and a second, Mr. Dean. Any other questions or discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries four to zero. Thank you. I appreciate the the uh enhancements to the motion. It was those are good good enhancements. So we already did our executive session. I think we can move on to discussion of future issues. Twenty twenty five street maintenance program. Uh is there something else to discuss?
No, I'm done talking about that.
Okay, what do we got to talk about now? Okay, so we do need to do a review and provide feedback on the Skyview Park conceptual plan.
Yeah.
And I believe that Dustin Lowman is that? Okay, with PEC to provide the overview and of layout.
So so before we get started on this, this is literally just an overview. Let's talk about it. We're not making a decision tonight. I just wanted to get this ahead of the June workshops. So when we talk budget and certain things, we have an understanding of where where we're at on this particular project. So I just don't want don't want anybody thinking we're making major decisions right now. We just getting your feedback and we can come back at any time.
Okay. So I'm in.
Hello, as I have been at PEC for two months, so I was not part of this project when it was started. So I'm
Is your is your mic on or what? He's he's not on. Make sure the button's lit up. Is it lit up?
How about that?
Is that better? Okay, okay, there you go. Thank you.
Okay. I'm not as familiar with this project as I probably should be. Um I was brought in on the tail end of this to kind of finish it up. Uh so as far as how we got to this point, I I can't answer all those questions, but uh but from what I understand is that the developer donated this property to the city and they want to dedicate it as a park. And so working with a known playground contractor that we've worked with in the past on multiple projects, they more or less just design the neighborhood or design the playgrounds for us, uh put together the budget, kind of turn it over to us and we just design everything on the outside of it. And so these are the the concepts that we have come up with. Uh we worked with them on the initial budget. And and then just kind of try to narrow it down a little bit more. Uh and so this is kind of the the concept that was developed over um last six months or so. So. The other one? Uh oh, I got you. I'm an overview kind of guy, a good perspective. And so the the developer donated three residential lots and they put the playground in the middle lot and uh connected the playground uh to the street with a sidewalk and I'm going to add some some trees to provide shade for the parents as they're sitting there. Uh the the playground equipment, uh I think there were four pieces. Each piece kind of is geared towards different age groups. Uh so we feel that that covers all the ages up to like thirteen, fourteen, you know, teenagers. Uh so if a family with multiple aged children, this should accommodate all their needs. And and under the uh you can see the yellow kind of their tents and so while we wait on the trees to grow, we've got shade structures and underneath each one of them uh on the south side, there's a couple benches on the north side. There's a picnic table, so trying to provide adequate seating for the for the families. And so along with this, um you know, we want to provide uh fescue turf grass and irrigation to go along with not only the trees, other landscaping, uh the playgrounds. And the choice for the fescue is because it's going to match into the adjacent lots. We don't want to put Bermuda grass or any other evasive grasses next to a nice fescue grass and uh is the cost estimate provided. Part of that. And and so that's where we came up with a lot of our cost estimate is just the irrigation, fescue grass. You know, looking at the irrigation system, we we thought about putting in a well, but looking at all the other wells in the area, uh groundwater is not abundant. And actually, it's in in I looked at ten wells around the area and any of them that did find water wasn't enough to actually produce a viable irrigation system. So I don't think an irrigation or a a well is a viable option. And so we we recommend putting in or connecting the irrigation system to city water.
We we looked at the pond to the south as well.
Correct. And uh that that also poses some other issues of additional costs of dewatering a pond. Let me back up. First, uh the city, I don't believe owns the pond. And so you would need to get permission from the owner of the pond to the south um to tap that as an irrigation source. That could be some some issues with that. Uh but if that was available, uh then you would have to have additional costs to dewater the pond, cut into the clay liner of the pond to put in the the pump and and then if you can reseal that pond liner, which is going to be very difficult. So those are just additional costs that that could add up. And then on the south side of the the lot is um a lot of pipeline, the gas pipeline easements. So crossing the gas pipeline easements could be challenging to work with those companies as well. Uh so so that's where we came up with our recommendation to just at the end of the day, make it easy tapping into city water.
I'm gonna bet in here. Is the neighborhood requiring fescue grass for the houses?
I don't believe so.
Then I think we should strongly be looking at drought tolerant grasses. We're going through a drought right now. We're not being able to water. Why are we talking about putting in a fescue thing at this point in the world?
With an irrigation system and all the complications. Yeah, look at native grasses.
For geoscaping, yeah.
So the the two strongest options would be Bermuda and Buffalo. I think Buffalo might be a better option uh as it's not as invasive as Bermuda grass is. And so if the neighbors do have fescue, uh it it won't take over the yard in a few years. Uh so that that'll definitely reduce some costs.
It costs a little more to put in, but it takes a lot less to maintain it.
So the other thing I am curious about, there's no parking here. I don't see any bicycle racks. I don't see any anything like that for transportation. I mean, it's a neighborhood park, I get that, but you know, how how our current society is, we drive where we go or we ride bikes or something.
Yeah.
Some walk, but uh
Uh and you know, I've I've done a lot of uh designed a lot of neighborhood uh pools and in City Wishaw and all cities around. And and that's a big contention is like, do we really need that many parking spaces for a neighborhood pool? And we've always kind of pushed back and always have put it a a variance to try to minimize parking because that is expensive.
Yeah.
Uh it's it's certainly an option, but the street is, I think it's thirty nine feet back to back. And so there there's plenty of room for parallel parking on either side of the street and still allowing two-way traffic.
On both sides? Parallel parking on both sides?
Correct.
Okay. All right, it's wide enough for that. Okay.
I'm going to push back a little bit on that idea. So I drove this neighborhood over the weekend and where that park is it's the corner, right? And that's the bend of the road and there's one sidewalk and it's on the opposite side. It's not on this side. So if kids are walking or biking, they're going to have to cross from the inside corner to the outside corner. And this is a neighborhood park, but it's also a city park. So there's going to be people wanting to visit it from all over the city. We just put in slanted parking in Bel Air Park as a part of the Woodlawn Project. People have loved having that. I know that amount of parking isn't necessary and will not fit in this lot, but I I would say that and again, it's all about cost, right? But I do believe that a few stalls, you don't need twelve, but five or six might be warranted. But also I think the connectivity piece, I mean, we it we have one sidewalk on the other side. There's there's going to be a lot of kids walking and biking to that to that location. So I think that the idea of a crosswalk, again, if you have people lined up parking on the street all around this bend, there is just all sorts of safety concerns there in my mind. So that's why I would push back and say, and I agree, we don't need a ton of parking. I would minimize the parking, but I don't think I'd want it on the street because this is going to just line up cars along and that neighborhood's not going to like it either, having a line of cars along that corner. So I I would strongly encourage us to consider how do we include some parking off the street? And then also be more mindful of the connectivity from the park to the future path, which I I know that's a separate topic, but so yeah.
I was thinking about that too. There's no sidewalk to get to the future bike path.
But I know that that'll come later.
Crossing for people going there.
Might look at alley.
Kind of outside of the lot, but it's part of the park concept, I think.
Yeah, I mean, as I looked through it, I was thinking the same thing, John. I was looking like, okay, we we probably ought to plan in this plan. Where would the future connection be? Even though the pass path won't be there yet. I agree.
So you're and maybe you're not familiar with this because you're new on the project, but there's a bike path planned just south of this this park, okay? It's not there right now, but there is a bike path planned for that. So
Along the pipeline.
So along the pipeline is easement, yeah. So uh that's what they're getting at is that maybe there needs to be availability, some access for bicycles to be there. Uh and and you know, as Councilmember Councilmember Dean said, need some some parking. And I I not knowing that we did the park, the sidewalk was on the opposite side of the street, we definitely would need us should put a sidewalk or a crosswalk in there. It doesn't have to be a lighted one. It could be just a marked crosswalk, but at least at least a crosswalk there.
We're going to need some no parking around that crosswalk to make it safe.
Well, it's illegal parking per crosswalk.
Well, but you can park right up beside it if you don't have no parking for twenty five feet or something.
And I get and I get it, Ted. You said this, we're not making decisions tonight, but those are that's my feedback. When we get the final design, I think some of those things ought to be incorporated. So that's my that would be my feedback.
And here's the here's the catch on all this is, you know, the original budget is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're at four hundred and seventy right now with with the bare bones. Uh how do you get a park in there? So so we're gonna we'll come back with, you know, some estimates on all everything we discussed. And then that that's where the real fun starts uh with this is, you know, do we want to remove some equipment? To wait. Um the other thing I, you know, I I do a lot of research on grants and if you know anything about park grants, there's not a lot of them. And if there is, there's twenty five thousand here, maybe from AARP. There's a a few small ones. Um the only large ones are federal grants that are from the wildlife and parks type. And that creates a whole other side of issues um that you have uh with those federal grants funding your parks. So a lot of times and I I'll I'll continue to look, but a lot of times this is a public service that we need, you know, that cities are kind of responsible to provide. There now there's donations. There's other things we can tap, but a lot of this is going to have to come probably from uh the, you know, our our revenue sources, um just to let you know. So I appreciate the feedback and that's kind of what I wanted tonight to, you know, show you the bare bones and then build from that. So.
I did have a a just a quick question while we're at it. One of the comments at Eagle Lake was the sand going away. Can you comment on that um with this turf? I know, you know, sand is kind of a mess and it's a pain, but are there um like ADA regulations that when you put in new parks, you can't even consider sand?
It's a great question. Um we we've always been told, or at least Brian is our kind of our Brian Hayes, our our rec directors, our resident, uh he keeps up a little bit with that is when you when you replace or build something new, it needs to be ADA compliant. But the fact that we have sand places are not going to make us remove all the sand. So I I would strongly suggest using uh ADA compliant materials with our new parks.
So but but people like to have some sand here and there. But in other words, if you do a replacement on our remaining sand, it's gonna, you're going to have to go to this because of the upgrade. Okay.
That's the way I've we've answered this question a few times in the past. I just can't remember. It hasn't been hasn't been recent, but I don't know if the mayor might know off the top of his head, but
The other thing I was thinking about is that we found that sand is really hard on this playground equipment too.
Yeah.
It's very abrasive.
It's very abrasive and hard in the in the equipment. So trying to avoid that. That's one reason we had to take that volleyball court out because of all the sand there. So.
Yeah, but that's a hundred and forty K for that turf work. That's that's a huge part of your overrun. It it's 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 a little expensive. Yeah.
It is. I I do want to say one more thing. So I mean, this is a good time to remind ourselves. So um the developer did donate those lots and totally appreciate him for doing that. Um but as we can see, I mean, those lots were probably worth twenty, thirty thousand a piece. So that that was maybe, you know, somewhere in the seventy to ninety range. We're spending five hundred K on on a a park. Now, I'm not saying we shouldn't because I'm I I think this is a good thing for the city. I think it will be nice to have another city park. But that is an expense we are covering, that our taxpayers are covering and that we're going to have to maintenance in perpetuity. Um again, not saying we shouldn't do it, but we should look at it and figure out ways to provide. Obviously, I've asked for things that are going to cost more, but we have to find a way to make this park work for the whole city, not just that neighborhood, because we've made that investment. So that's why I was so passionate about saying that we need to have parking and this needs to be considered more of a city park, not just a neighborhood park.
Yeah, I I appreciate that comment too because cynically, I mean, I appreciate the donation too, but cynically, you could say the developer is trying to create a development park by donating donating the lots and passing the cost on. So yeah, I and I don't know, I know you said you're new to the project, but like even just like with the disc golf course on the other side of Oliver, like for I I don't know what the space would allow there or what that building to the north is, but they said three or four spots, just so people can come in from other parts of the city and safely park there. I'd be in support of that.
And with three lots being donated, um I was talking to the the person who did the this particular run and she was like, well, maybe I showed this one because I don't think the houses are accurate distance from the actual park. So they may be a little bit further away, but even if they are they are this close, there is plenty of room for uh parking between the sidewalk and and that lots for um well, looking on the hard paper, I I think we could probably get six to eight parking stalls if if that's desired. Um but then also thinking, you know, as you were saying, as you know, people are driving through this neighborhood and looking on the inside corner on the other side. If people are parking there, that does create a visual hazard if people are trying to cry use a crosswalk. Um so parking might be a a good option. But also if this is going to be part of a larger bike park or a bike path, um these sidewalks are Um, these sidewalks are showing us six feet. So maybe we bump them up to 10 feet wide. Or at least maybe one side just, and, and then add a spot for, uh, for bikes.
Do you want your bike path to go right next to that play area though?
I feel like it's going to be on the south side and really all you'd have is some sort of a connector sidewalk. And again, that would be later.
It's actually the end of our, of our phase from the rec center all the way to this park. So it'd end right there.
But I mean, if you've got people using the bike path, do you want them cutting through the playground area? Or do you want them taking a separate route through that lot to get to the bike path?
Yeah, probably a separate. Yeah.
All right. That would be my opinion.
You could run a separate route when you build the path. Yep. I agree.
That would be future plan.
But, but I also agree with the buffalo grass. I think that's a great idea. In fact, I think that's what we put in on Woodlawn. If I'm, if, if I'm remembering right and that, you know, parts of that have done well and parts of them haven't, but I think if we can get it to start, it, it would be a good option. Especially since the kids are going to be using the turf, not the outside grass to do whatever.
Okay. Any other comments for Mr. Lowman? Well, it's good, good initial presentation.
Thank you.
Now you got some things to work on, right?
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it.
If you hadn't put that out there, we wouldn't have had anything to shoot down.
Yeah, we wouldn't be doing anything, right?
Okay. It's hard to start from zero.
Yeah, it is. All right. Well, next item is adjournment.
I moved, we adjourn.
Second.
Second by Mr. David. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Too bad. We're going home. So that motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.